Okay, gonna make a motion to call the meeting order at 6:36. Approval of the agenda. There's no changes today, right?
No, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion, Rob?
Motion?
Second, Chris?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Approval of the minutes, can I get approval of the minutes of June 10th? There's a regular select board meeting minutes? I didn't see any changes in it.
Oh, that was fine. Nope, motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Special select board meeting on June 20th? I didn't see anything there either. Basically, we went into...
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it for the minutes right there. Michael?
That's it.
Okay, next on the agenda is select board member feedback and concerns.
Ready?
I think I'm pretty good. I think we're upping the asked.
Nothing else?
Okay, moving on from there. I'm gonna open it up to the public comment in the audience. You're with the rec, you're here for the clerk's office, Jim. And you're here with the garage. Okay, now we're gonna go to the Zoom. Does anybody on Zoom have anything for open public comment? Not hearing anyone or seeing anyone unmute themselves, we're gonna move on to recreation master plan. You wanna step up here?
Uh, can you?
Sit down.
And Lisa's joining us virtually.
Yeah. You got your stuff where you want it.
Okay, I have a copy.
Now, take my copy.
What's with mine?
You're unmuted, Lisa.
You can't see me though, right? Like, camera seems not to be working.
Yeah, I've never seen, I've never seen that symbol before. It's like a camera.
It's like a computer.
Or a camera.
I've never seen, I've never seen them before either. It must have done something in there.
Well, we can still hear you. We're gonna let Emily take it off, or is Lisa starting?
Don't we have somebody joining from the...
Yeah, have you heard from Andrea, Lisa?
He was supposed to be joining us. Didn't confirm it today, although we'll send her the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we just, why don't we give it a little bit of time in case this person comes? Board of licking controls?
That's a good idea, and I'm gonna check my emails to see if he's...
Yeah, okay.
This is the company.
Go ahead.
We have an outside consumption limited permit from Killington, West Grand City. With respect to their cooler in the mountains series, it runs from Saturdays from June 29th through August 31, excluding July 20th, which I believe is the...
Y.
The wine festival?
Yes.
They're hosted at the K-1 base lodge. Alcohol will be sold out of the Roaring Brook Umbrella Bar, which is already permitted. However, the area that we are serving in will be expanded past the existing barriers that the umbrella bar and surrounding patio have. Fencing will be put up to delineate the DLC area.
The last few years, the Saturday music was held down at Snowshed, and now they're moving it back up to K-1.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion for the town clerk's office to move forward with the resorts.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Board of, well, we'll still give a little bit more here. Set the FY 25 tax rate. This is just the municipal tax rate?
Just the municipal side. Thank you, Jim. I have a memo here to the select board inside of your packets regarding the FY 25 tax rate. So, grand list value for the tax year 2024, 2025 to date is $8,154,094.12. That's not real property value. That's, that's just the 1% that's on the grand list. And then, and then in March of 2024, the taxpayers voted for the town to collect $4,842,314 from taxes. Property value inside the TIP district increased this year by $523,480 in real value, 15% of which is assigned to the grand list and the remainder to the bonds. Accounting for increment assignments, the tax rate for 2024, 2025 is .5969. The tax rate predicted or estimated in this year's town report was .5925, so we weren't too far off there. And last year's tax rate was .5445. So, tonight, what I'm seeking from the board is a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 tax rate of .5969.
So moved. Yep. I mean, we're .5 or .4 off. Not that, we don't know what the grand list is until they go through it, so.
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we're still not seeing from that the childcare payroll tax payment? You can just hang out with us.
Sign me up. Put me on the board.
We have a few... Every day. We have a few things that we have to wrap up before the first of the year. One of the reasons why we threw it on special meeting that happened last week was because we wanted to open it up for discussion before the board made a decision tonight. So, just a quick rundown of what the childcare payroll tax requirements are. So, starting July 1st, employers have to calculate the total payroll for all their employees, and .44% of that has to go to the childcare payroll tax payment. There are two options. The town can take on the entire .44%, or they can pass on a portion of it to the employers, maximum .11% per employer, which is 25% of the total payment. So, tonight, what, what I'm seeking from the board is either a motion to adopt the .44% for the whole town to take on, or to share that with the employers, employees.
And as Chris and I were talking the other day at the special meeting, you know, the state's gonna be coming in a lot more with more of these taxes, I believe. This is like social security and everything else, where the employer pays a share and the employee pays a share. So, I would make a motion to the town pays the .33, and the employee, the employee pays .11.
Yeah, I think it's important as employers and employees, that everyone understands we're sharing this responsibility the state has brought up, and why we're carrying the heavy burden of it, or the larger burden of it. I think everyone needs a share in that process, so.
I think a motion for us to move forward with the town pays the .33, and the employees pay .11. So moved. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye. Okay. We're just moving along.
Yeah, we're doing good.
The notice of conveyance of the real property that was acquired by the town, that's gonna go into executive session. It's still the last closing that we gotta fill in everybody. On for real estate is Abby in? Yep. Abby, do you wanna do your TIP project construction update?
Uh, TIP project, I didn't know I was doing this.
No, you weren't.
Oh, okay.
You've got, you've got the, I was gonna see if you were gonna run with it. No. We can make this a group effort, but Abby, just to give you a heads up, I have included your public works report in their packets, so we can probably touch on that.
Okay, let's touch on that for Abby.
Okay, you can go ahead.
All right, so Abby can go on the public works thing.
Abby, go.
I knew you were here somewhere, I didn't see the public works on the thing.
It's in here?
Yes, the last page.
It's very, it's very last.
Do you want a little one thing?
Yeah, public works report.
So, I just, I wanna first introduce you all. I think I saw you all, met Kevin, just looking with me, and Kevin Hewitt. He's out there in the audience, I can see him. Is our new road foreman, started today. He's been with Killington for a bit now. So, now we're gonna be looking for someone to fill his shoes. I'm just gonna kinda introduce him to everybody.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you. Condolences.
We're gonna keep him busy. So, the guys, they've been working on Thundering Brook Road. They're continuing on that. They've replaced three culverts between the intersection with River Road and Thundering Brook Bridge as part of that. They've started roadside mowing last week, starting with River Road. And Jay came to me last week and said he wants to put together a schedule for mowing of where they'll be, so hopefully that will come to you all soon, so you can see what that might look like. Road grading is continuing. East Mountain House currently the area that they're working on. Anticipating another week to a week and a half in that area, depending on the weather. Still dealing with the beavers who got very busy. Who they notched the dam to knock down the dam, so rebuilding it that same day. So, we're gonna have to look at some traffic to kind of get rid of some of those. Starting July 1st, they can start notching some of the other dams. We've got special approvals to start on a few of them early, because they were jeopardizing some of our roads, specifically River Road. But more, more to come. And the radar signs, Bob is playing it with WIT to confirm the locations, and then we can call Big Safe to get those installed. They've been working on education and safety training. Most recently, they did facility compliance and bucket estimator operator safety. Kevin and Bill are gonna take part of greater operator training on July 2nd. And, you know, through these, they've been able to identify some OSHA issues and resolve those to bring the town barrage back into compliance. And earlier today, I guess, you know, TIP construction update, we did talk about the water system earlier today, and I did sign up for my Class 3 water operator training course, which is happening this fall. We're gonna have the months of September and October. We have some problematic driveways. Really, we have various ones around town that are interfering with the town highways, stormwater systems. There are two specific property owners that I'm trying to reach out to to get them to resolve the issue. Do we have to take additional steps with them? Flood recovery, had a meeting with FEMA on June 12th. It kind of been silent for about a month, canceling meetings with me. We were finally able to meet with them and see what we can move forward with on our projects. So, right now, I'm planning to move forward with the stream of culvert on East Mountain Road near the intersection with Bear Mountain Road, and hopefully get this bid out for completion by October 1st. There's also a paving bid that just went out on Friday. It'll appear in the mountain times this week, which will be for paving from Route 4 to Bear Mountain Road, leaving the section that will be the culvert replacement. We'll leave that alone, and then pick up again from the ski bridge to Bear Mountain Road. We also met with the Brooklyn Regional Planning Commission and talked about the hazard mitigation program. There's about 64 million available for projects. And the state, there's normally, I think it's a 25% local match, but the state has agreed to cover it, so this is a little bit unprecedented. We're looking at projects that we can submit for that. We're looking at a section of River Road, building that up. This is the part that has been flooding. And then there might be some areas of town that were affected by the flood, but won't necessarily be covered by FEMA, so seeing if we can get some of those submitted as well. And I'm thinking that there's no way they can spend, the state can spend 64 million, so I'm trying to think ahead to next year, too. I have a meeting with Lisa and a few others next week to see what else, you know, do we need to make sure we have it forefront in case there is more coming available next year. Upcoming, actually, I guess this got finished last week, so let me know if there's anything more that needs to be done. The potholes were filled on West Hill Road. Once the bas are finished with Thundering Brook Road, they're gonna move to Wick Berry Lane, and there are some drainage issues there. And then they'll assess up high, I for ditch line culvert work that's needed. On Old Poked Road, there's still, you know, sort of a punch list of items that need to be completed from last fall's project. And then there's stormwater issues on the upper ground, unfortunately.
Great. So, Abby, the one, one of the speeding, one of the radar signs coming down on the right-hand side of Killington Road, I think down toward, there's the one up on top, and there's the next one, I don't think it's working. I don't think it's registering. We could take a look at that. And then, since we're on this anyway. Hey, Kev, why don't you tell us about you? I mean, we got you here, so we might as well let you talk.
So, I've been with the town for a little over a year and a half now. Worked under Ricky and stuff before. I've been on this mountain, working with the resort and the town now for about a decade altogether. I've been in road construction, dealt with aggregates, the whole nine yards. So, I'm really hoping to put all my skills and stuff to use for the town, to benefit the town, and get us on track with all the roads, especially with Abby's help, and all these trainings, making sure that we're all up on everything that we need to be. That's about it, I mean.
So, I just know, like, during the, that one big snowstorm that we had, well, we had two towards the end, and the resort was working with the town, and the town was working with the resort, because there was so much going on.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that storm was crazy.
And you were out there working your butt off and giving help on both sides, helping with the resort and the town, so. So, thanks a lot for all your help.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
All right.
Real quick, Abby, this is a great format. I think it's, and I applaud you for doing it. It like, it allows us to address people in the town when they ask questions of when things are getting done, or when they're not getting done, or what the next plan is. So, I really appreciate this. So, if you can keep it up, that'd be great. No pressure.
Maybe like, once a month.
Yeah, monthly, right? Yeah. Monthly, it'd be great.
I don't need every time.
You know, if you're gonna give, you know, give us, you know, either myself or Kevin, or both of us any feedback on things you want addressed, or things you're hearing?
No, it's just, it's nice to be able to answer questions to people. They, you know they'll pop up, and so, they get it, any year they'll listen, they'll bring it up. So, I think that this is a good, great situation, so thank you.
I think when we do the minutes, Michael, that this should be attached to the minutes.
We can make it happen.
Okay? So, then if someone's at the post office and they go to read the minutes, then they'll see the public works report. So, so they can...
If they wanna get on, they get on it.
Yeah, so.
Anyway, I applaud you, great job.
So, Lisa, have you gotten any answer back through your emails?
I have none. I'm not really sure what happened. I mean, I'm happy to kind of just walk it through with the select board, or we could certainly reschedule.
My next question was gonna be, do we need the person to do it? Are we good on our own between you and Emily?
So, I mean, so, excuse me. I'm happy to kind of, you know, just kind of tell the select board the process we went through and where we are, and, you know, the decision the planning commission and rec commission made, and, you know, I was hoping that everyone would have an opportunity to meet Andrea. She confirmed with us on Friday, so I'm not really sure what happened.
Should we cut table only for the, we need for a consultant to speak to us? That's my only, that's my only.
So, um... I hate to do this to you.
But nothing to do today, okay?
Yeah, I just was at camp last night.
Except we came to the NHL, so. All right, we kill enough time, you could go up to one of the bars there and watch the game. I, I agree with Chris that we did pay for a consultant, and we should be, you know...
Somebody just joined, could we just see if it...
That's Greenmount National Golf Course.
Yeah.
Nope. Okay. Yeah. Let's, let's do it at another, another meeting then.
Maybe she didn't see the email, and whatever.
Disappointing, I'm not sure what happened. You know, she's been extremely highly responsive, so I'm assuming...
Something could've came up. Things happen. So, um, so the TIP project construction update, then, Michael?
We can...
Thanks for keeping company.
Thanks, Emily.
You're welcome.
You were a nice addition.
Move into town, you could take one of our seats.
I'll stay with the rec.
Sure, we can start with water. As everybody can see, Markowski's hard at work between Anthony, oh, no, we're starting with road. Markowski's hard at work between Anthony Way and Route 4. The town meets with them tomorrow to get an update on their schedule. Looking at it, it's probably hard to believe they're gonna be done by July 15th, and, and they've kind of admitted to that. So, what we, what we've done is reached out to them to get, get an idea of, of, of what the next month, month and a half will look like. We don't see, we don't have an expectation of it going, of extending much further past mid-August, but the town will have an update for everybody on that soon. And, and when I say mid-August, I mean, what we're doing now is working really hard for Markowski to at least have some lanes open, even if they have to extend their work in, into the coming months. Do you have anything to add to that?
I mean, we met with them last Tuesday. We were meeting with them like, once every two or three, every three weeks. We started doing every week about two weeks ago. July 8th to July 15th is supposed to be the timeline. I'm, I'm underneath the belief that we'll have better answers tomorrow, and I think that we will have one lane up and one lane down somewhere in this month of July. Okay, it's not gonna be, so when they're gonna come into us and say August or mid-August, there's a lot of side road, you know, off the, off the road. So, we will come out tomorrow, we'll put it on the website tomorrow, but I have a funny feeling that they're going to say like, July 18th or whatever, 15th to the 18th, that they're gonna have to work some way to have one lane up, one lane down, and not with the traffic light or whatever, just up and down, while they do all their other work on the side. So, fingers crossed, that's what we're gonna hear.
Yeah, and that's just with us kind of working with them on it, because, I mean, there, there's a lot of ledge there, is what the fact of the matter is.
That's it, so, I mean...
Yeah, so...
Today, I mean, it...
Can you visualize what's happening now?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And the piles going away a lot faster than I thought in those last couple of days. I mean, um, the way it's explained to us when we go to these meetings, there was a certain amount of ground that was gonna be taken away. And some of it is going to be dirt fill, and some of it is going to be blasting rock. And they were estimating like 9,800 cubic yards or whatever of rock, and X amount of dirt. There was more dirt, no, there was less dirt, less dirt, but we're around 11,000 to 12,000 cubic yards of rock. So, that takes a little while longer. But we'll have an update on tomorrow afternoon.
I think we'll see, too, just kind of looking at it, like, if I remember correctly, the contract was July 15th to be base pavement.
Right.
And so, you know, they're working hard, weather's not helped them at all.
Well, that was not a thing in the beginning.
Yeah. And, but, and they picked up Saturdays to get going with it even further.
Then Friday, I was told they were out working till like, 6:30, 7 o'clock, something there.
Yeah, and we, and we might get there. They, they've even admitted to us, now that they have that road that goes up there, that's at final, at final grade, they're, they feel a lot more optimistic about than they did when all the rubble was still there.
But we still get, we still have some things, too, you know, Green Mountain Power getting in there to move the power over and everything else.
Yeah, but that's not gonna interfere with...
It doesn't, but it's challenging at the same time, because the road, they can't do it till the road's there.
Right.
So, there's gonna be some. But I think they're working along in a great progression.
So, we're gonna have a more formal update for everybody on time.
After tomorrow, I think we meet at 11:00. So, we meet at 11:00 tomorrow morning. So, we'll put something up on the website tomorrow afternoon by like, 2 o'clock. But I really do think that we will have that road open within this month of July, you know? Go ahead. And you have to say, even though we know who you are, the TV needs to know.
Debbie will come.
Okay.
I have a question. I thought I had read something months ago that meeting a certain date for this is tied to the TIP funding?
No.
It's not?
No, not, not this.
It's not, okay.
We have 10 years to complete the job.
I thought, I thought this section, there was something. Okay.
No, no, it's not. There's a, and we have to go through it every two weeks, too, because there's so many different things, but there's no, there's no deadlines on this first batch that we're doing.
Okay. I'm not surprised it's taken so long, but that, that was my concern.
Yeah. You know, we gotta remember, we were gonna do this last fall, and then because of the July 7th rainstorm, we pushed it out to this spring to do. So, it's really like, I think it was some 90 days or 108 days or whatever. So, if they go into like, the first week of August, they're really like 115 to 120 days or something like that. So, we're, we're good on that. We're not losing any money, believe us, real. We're staying on top of that. Okay, Debbie? All right, any other questions? Any questions on this from the public?
I guess we can talk about water real quick, but nobody has any questions of road. Water is pretty much what, what you can see now. They, they've moved away from doing as much work as they have up, up the mountain, even though they, they are installing pipe up there still. But now, what's really exciting to see is the pump house being built.
On Route 4.
On Route 4, yeah. And they're also working on the wells across the street. And soon, we're gonna start doing flow tests on the third well. So, just to kind of jog everybody's memory, there, there are actually three wells. Two of them have been permitted. We're working on the third one to be permitted now. It's passed all of its quality tests. We just have to take on some quantity tests now. And that, that'll be scheduled here in the next few months, which, we have to work with the state a little bit on how that's gonna happen. But no, Casella's on schedule. You know, we, we expect the tanks to be installed, you know, what do we say, spring, next spring?
Yep.
And...
We expect to go out to bid late July, mid-August on Contract 4 for water.
That's right.
And that will get us the water line from where, where you see the path cutting up towards Snowshed, heading towards Bear on your right. So, then there'll be a pipe right there that will come, and we'll be bidding that out, and it's supposed to run all the ways down to Ravine Road. But we expect to put it out to bid in August and get some work done this fall on the bid, and hoping to hit by the, to the Grand Hotel with the water line at that point. And then on the road, for the next set of road up there, we're hoping to go to bid in the wintertime to start doing the road up there in the springtime. So, everything's moving along.
Yeah, and that's a little delayed, it's just because we're working with the state on some updated wetland rules. And so, we, we just wanna make sure before we start, we've got all of our Ts crossed, Is dotted, and...
But everything is, everything as far as money-wise and dollars and deadlines, that's, there's no problem there. That TIP thing is, we, we started drawing on it, and we have 10 years of drawing on it, on that. And then some of the, the bond money that we, the, the free money that we have, like grants and stuff, we're all working on that to stay in line on it or whatever. You know? If it did fall one of the grants, which I don't think they will, it's still on the developer, because it's into the development agreement that they have to put up the money, starting '25, '26 for whatever bond being talked from there. So, we're all good on that. But I think we should be doing this also, like Abby does, like, let's just do this once a month also.
I usually, I usually have like, a TIP update in my manager's report.
We could put, if you put it in, instead of in the manager's report, just put it in as a line item, TIP project construction update. So, then when the people see it, then they know, oh, it's on, and if they wanna come in here or on the, on the Zoom, then they can ask their questions, instead of finding it in the manager's report.
I'll collab, I think it's, I think that's a great idea. Abby and I, we're gonna meet kind of next week. She's been here for a while, she's seasoned. I'm gonna, I'm gonna creep into a different lane, I think, here soon. So, I think it's more appropriate, probably, for her to do.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll do that, but then that way, at least the public will see that it's on the schedule. So we'll do that, but then that way at least the public will see that it's on the schedule and they can come in if they have questions. All right? So, um, any questions on any of that from the Zoom? Seeing none. Everybody else is okay? Okay, so, um, we got department reports. When we first jumped since we got Green Mountain National Golf Course here, we got Green Mountain National Golf Course paperwork.
Yeah, we're lucky. We got Justin and David here, I think. So you guys have the comparative reports. I hope they're, I think they were forwarded to you last week. So if you can just, if the board has any questions for you there, if you guys have any talking points about that or any other general financing, financials for the golf course, take it away.
Hey, Michael, David here.
Hey, Dave.
How you doing?
Good.
I thought I'd just start off with a little recap of May, if that's okay? Or do you want me to go just stick directly to the financials?
No, I think you could, you do what you got to do there, David. Give us a little, how's it going?
It's going well. I mean, start off, golf course condition, I mean, we opened May 3rd, so we almost had a full match, pretty close to it. And starting with golf course condition, Robert and his team, he's finally got a full, or close to a full group of, of help. So that's making a huge difference, but turf quality is excellent. Greens are very healthy. The rest of the golf course is playing very well, nothing but compliments there. So I think the golf course is as good, certainly as good as I've seen it in the time I've been there, so that's excellent. I know the board asked about operating a mixer. We had, I think the last Thursday in May, we had our league night, which is on every Tuesdays. We added a mixer to that as well, which was the Parkdale and Killington Town Association. So based on our league night, I think we had around 50 people play and then the mixer folks turned up. At 20 or 25 folks, we had some live music. So that went off really, really well. That's sort of a recap of, of, of May in terms of player, in terms of the golf course. Player numbers from May, we did, I think, 16,000, 1,600, 1618 rounds, so 1,618 rounds in May, which was a little up on last year at 1,530 rounds. The round count from May was strong. And we had a good participation in, in membership or season pass rollout. We're a little under where we were last year, but still healthy, 113 people across all categories for our membership. So in terms of that, that's sort of a quick May recap. If anyone has any questions.
What's our percentage we're down in terms of pass holders compared to previous year?
Well, I'll give you the raw numbers. Last year we had 1.7 overall categories. This year we're at 113. But we still can see people come in at this time of year and I'm, I'm expecting it, we could get another five to seven passes before the season's out, so we're going to be right around that number.
Okay.
All right, I'm looking here, you're in period 11 underneath season passes and you budgeted 107,500 and you're at 108,153.
Yes.
So you might have lost a few, but you did raise the price of the season pass up also.
Correct, yes.
So revenues add.
Revenues add.
Head counts down.
Head counts down. Price sensitivity. The green fees, 589 right now, period 11. You're only like $110,000 off and you have all the month of June to, to, to do that. So, I mean, you normally would do over 120 grand in June anyway, right? Dave?
Correct, yeah. We're, we're looking strong in June. I pulled some comparatives this morning. We're currently, if you go date to date, we're at $206,000 in revenue in June. So if that's total through the POS system compared to the same time last year of 211,000. And June this year, we have five Saturdays as opposed to June last year where we only had four.
Okay.
And that's just, that's just a mathematical thing. Expect if we have a strong weekend, next weekend we'll be just fine in June.
Well, we're only 110 off. We're only looking at a report that ended in May, the last day of May. So you're good there. You know, the one thing that's been popping up to me, and it's in the restaurant, it's not you, David, but like, why do we even carry wine? We have $608 in sales and 300, almost $400 in cost. And I looked at last year's full year that ended '23 and we did like $1,300 in sales with almost $1,200 in, in, in cost. I, I, I think we're like cracking bottles open and then you don't have enough wine drinkers and you end up after tossing it or whatever.
Correct. If I can, and I started there, we did have bottled wine and this, once you open a bottle of wine, it tends to spoil rather quickly. So we did go away from that. We, we had some wine that had been sitting on the shelf there for I don't know how long. So we did manage to get rid of that in terms of selling it, not pouring it down the sink. And currently, I believe our, our wine sales are in those new 375 mil cans. So we do offer a wine product, but because it tends not to sell, it, it, it's basically not our market. Our 35 to 50-year-old male tends not to drink a lot of wine. You do cater for the folks that do with a canned product, which isn't ideal, but it, it does, it does offer something for those folks.
Okay. And then liquor, last year, um, last year we were at 26 grand. Our expenses last year on liquor were in the $7,000 range or whatever. We're about 25% whatever there of costs compared to sales. And now this year, we're like over, I mean, we're almost $10,000 in expenses and we're around $33,000 and $31,000 in sales. So, um, and then my last part here is the total expenses. We're at $1,069 and we budgeted 2.9, I mean, 1.29 for that. So we're probably pretty on that, right? We don't really, we're, we're past the really expensive expense time of May, right? June?
Yes, I, yeah, there has been some items within the expense sheet that are higher than they were last year. Typically, I think you're looking at pesticides for one. On the goal, on the, on the maintenance side, maintenance labor is higher due to the fact that we have, we actually have close to a full complement, although it's still under budget. So those are some of the factors which contribute into that, yes.
Just so I know what I'm looking at here, this is 11-month compared to a full year? Is that?
No, there's 11-month compared to, this is actual 11-month?
Compared to the used.
Okay.
This is what it was budgeted and this is what actual is to May because our year ends in June.
I got you.
So the second and the fourth column.
Yeah, the year over year, second to fourth.
Right, and then the, and the third column is the, was the budget for the full year.
Full year.
Yeah, so the next month we'll get.
You don't know your June run rate was, so you can't, you don't really know where you're going to wind up.
Right, so the next month in July, we'll end up getting the FY number and compare it from there. But everything, we just run through it. Everything looks like it's going on, so.
Hey, David.
Thanks, David.
This is, hey, let's do a comparative inventory analysis so we can see, because again, we're looking at the cash accounting, so purchases of liquor, but let's look at the inventory comparison year over year so we can actually compare a cost of goods number and see exactly what's going on with Jim's question. Then we can circle back with, with Michael and the board and give them a little more info there.
Yeah, you might have $3,000 worth of liquor sitting on the shelf, which would be all right, because then it will go into July, which is your next year. So as long as we have, I don't think we really have an inventory on what's at liquor, okay? And that, and that would be good if we can get that, because then that would stop that question.
How is our net over $100,000 difference?
Oh, I was going to bring that up, because they're making the payments this year on the bonds. This is the first year that they're making the payments on the full bonds.
Where is that show, where is it?
So you're looking at the FY '24, so the long-term debt, okay? So the long-term debt, so far they paid $23,986. They still have a small payment, but they paid $29,000 there. And if we go up to the capital expenses, they also have, equipment is up $13,000 in, in the budget that wasn't budgeted in at that point.
But a year ago we.
But yeah, then you have the total. But the, the budget, when we approved this budget, the net was going to be $81,441 for 2024. And at period 11, they're at 75, so there's $6,000 away from hitting it. And I'm sure you're going to go over that $6,000. So you'll be greater than $81,000. But, you know, there was a lot of other costs in here, Chris, that was not, I mean, there's 24, there's $27,000 that would have got us up to over 100K if we didn't have that thrown over to them. And then I think also we did not, was this, it's the next year's budget that we're not putting the $100,000 into the capital?
That's right.
In 2024, we did put the $100,000 into the budget.
But when I go, when you look this through and you look at your restaurant as compared to the previous year is down 18,000.
Well, the restaurant side, I, I'm looking at that the same way as you. It's like their, their cost is up and their resale isn't up as much.
And then you're missing another 22, you're missing 50,000 in terms of whether your expenses are up higher all the way through.
Yeah.
As compared to a year ago. So it's not the bond payment that's happening with.
It's bond plus.
It's the expenses.
Yeah.
The expenses are gone, are up significantly versus what we were a year ago.
And this I think we started getting into, like with the season passes, the last time you were on, David, where it's like, you know, trying to make it a percentage across and trying to learn the inflation that it is. And I don't know if we're doing that so great on the, um, the resale side, Chris, with our restaurant side and with some of the other stuff.
I, yeah, I just, I mean, we, our expenses are up significantly. That's all I'm, you know, as, I mean, again, as he pointed out, our wages are up $37,000.
Right.
So, you know, we just have to know, it's not going to, at the end of how this is looking as we go into the last month, it's not going to kick out the 100, another $100,000 like it did a year ago.
No, but then they budgeted only 81.
I, I'm not, I'm, what I'm looking at, I'm looking at dollars compared to what we.
Well, the year before, yeah.
That's all I'm looking for.
Right.
So at some point, the cow's not going to have another $100,000.
Right.
That's all.
So that brings us up to.
This is tough for me because I don't know why you planned, you know, 100 grand less. So I wasn't part of the planning cycle, so I don't know where that went, so I, I'm abstaining. You know what I mean? So, yeah.
That brings up the next, like Justin, you're here, you were here in March, I think, for a meeting? Justin?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we went through some stuff or whatever and, um, some of the capital stuff or whatever, the capital purchases, where we, we kind of approved, Chris, for purchases? And then said, get back to us for stuff because we can return or, or cancel or whatever. So where are we at? Because we never had any other meeting after that March, middle of March meeting.
And just a quick update before that, Justin, I've got your grassland invoice here for the Groundmaster 4500. I think that this has kind of triggered this conversation, along with another.
Yeah.
Financial services loan application or financing application from Yamaha.
So I, I pulled up the March 12 minutes in, in the paperwork, I think it's March 12th, somewhere in there where you came in, Justin. And there is a whole schedule of, and there are things that said future, and the Yamahas are approved. We did approve the Yamaha utility carts.
Well, this is different, I think.
We approved five utility carts.
Oh, you did? Okay, that's.
Yeah, we, we approved that.
It's helpful to know.
Okay, because the lease was ending, remember, Chris? It was like, we were, so we were losing two, because when we had the lease on the carts payments, we had the lease payments on the carts, which now we're holding on to the carts another year.
Yeah, remember that.
But with that lease came two or three.
They had to give back the freebies.
We had to give the freebies, the utility carts back. So you asked for five carts, correct, Justin?
Yes, yeah, and those are approved and we got financing on those. Did those arrive yet, David? They were supposed to be here within, well, either last week or this week, I guess.
They have not yet.
That's the one I'm looking at.
Yeah, they should be here, they should be here shortly.
I have no idea about this here, but let's go to that. So the future needs.
I'm going to share my screen.
Okay.
But I got to clean it up a little bit real quick.
Yeah, so.
So like the, the future, when it says in there, the future needs or whatever, and it says approved, Chris and I and Steve Fineran were underneath the impression that we were told when this stuff is going to come in. And I think I, I saw something because there's yellow, or, so the UMAX things have like a greenish or whatever, okay? And I believe that, so that's, it's, it's, those are approved or whatever. If you scroll over even more, there's actually payment schedules or whatever, okay?
Yeah.
So, so that was approved and what Mark, when he was doing the finance, he was trying to get better idea of what's coming in when and saying that we only have like $146,000 in capital, um, at the time. So if I look at the Treasurers report, um, there's 146,763 that's in restricted funds. And then if I go back to the Green Mountain, there's another sheet here somewhere. So the capital expenses for FY '24 so far were at 78,000 and we budgeted $119,000. And what Mark was afraid of is that if we took all this stuff in for the future, that we only have $146,000 as of today in the budget and we're going to need at least $119,000 for 2025 again if we don't take anything in. Correct, Justin?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and then we're supposed to put 3% of the revenue in to capital?
I mean, that's what we earmark at the facilities that are, are liquid enough to do so.
Right, so the best that we could do is put like $40,000 in. And if we only have 146 and we add another 40, 186, we got $60,000 left over. But now Michael just gave me a grassland for an ER, Grounds Master 4500, and it's So we buy this.
And, and this was approved, and so this is one of those green marks here, Justin, that says approved.
Yeah, that, that was approved, and I'm using approved in quotations because I know that's, that's debatable at this point with the communication, but that was approved as a capital lease, so it would be, it would be $1,895 a month. So the thought there is not to, to obviously pay that upfront, so that would add another, uh, $22,740 on a year from a capital expenditure standpoint, from, from a capital lease, which would be below the line lease.
Okay, can you scroll always over to the left? Yeah. And then, so it is the 4500, which is, unit price is $86,000, extended price is 93, and that's FY '24, okay? But it has, yeah, it says terms 60 months, okay? But we have an invoice here that Michael just, so when did we, we haven't approved, that was the other thing that we were talking about, Chris, in March, like come to us and we wanted to know what was leased, what we could lease, what could, and we haven't gotten anything. So what's this invoice here now? So what's this invoice here now for that forty five?
Can you, Justin, can you explain to them about the ground master mower?
Yeah, so that's a rough mower, and that would be replace, well, not replacing, but the two rough mowers we have now are fourteen and sixteen years old, about four thousand hours on them. So we typically scrap, you know, start scrapping rough mowers at about thirty five hundred hours. Those are, to the point now where they're probably start requiring some, some investment to keep them operational. But again, that, that invoice is, is, or, I mean, if you want to pay it outright, which.
Well, we can't, we can't, because we won't have any money next year to pay the rest of the other leases.
Yeah.
Right, so it, it would be a capital lease, and it would be, you know, at, at a standard eight percent rate, it would be, you know, eighteen hundred a month, and at the end of the lease, we would own that item. It would be ours as opposed to a fair market value.
And that's a five-year lease, right, sixty months?
Right, five-year lease.
And last, and this would last like the ten years or whatever, like the other ones were lasting fourteen?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So what are we borrowing money out?
But this is, but this is what we asked for, you and I asked, and this is what held this up, and this is why maybe, is this machine here?
Yeah, that got delivered two weeks ago.
Okay, so it's here, so, but we've been, Chris and I have been waiting for, because we had said that, like, eight percent, we could probably borrow it five percent.
Right, that's why we don't have financing on that yet, that I had spoke to Michael and just asked if, if, you know, we wanted to look into the financing that on your end, or we want to do it.
Someone in the audience was asking, I think it was.
No, I just said they just brought it.
Oh.
Well. So I guess my question would be, is, you know, when Jim and I were discussing this prior to, and Mark was still involved with us and we, all these numbers projected out, to me, it would, where we have a lot better borrowing power for us to go out and obtain a note that was a revolving note, where in fact we could put pieces like this on here and pay a hell of a lot less than eight percent interest and save a lot of money. This is why we're asking for this type of stuff before, because it's, you know, and we never knew when the equipment's gonna show up, we'd sat here and would wait and wait and wait.
We were told that we can cancel if we wanted to.
Tractor shows up one day and then the bucket shows up four months later.
That's the town.
Huh?
That was the town side or was that the golf course?
No, it was the golf, no, it wasn't their fault, it was John Deere wasn't delivering. So to me, I just think that we would, you know, we could save a lot of interest. I mean, you know, we're looking here, you know.
And sixty five.
We're looking at sixty five hundred dollars in interest, probably.
My bigger concern is, is that we have a hundred and forty six thousand dollars for capital. If you add eighteen hundred dollars a month, okay, you have another twenty thousand dollars there, and we already know that we're gonna probably have like a hundred and, with that, we'll have a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of capital spending next year. And we're gonna have zeroed out our capital budget. So like, did we get in the Realmaster five four one oh? The one right underneath it?
No, that, that, that's not, that won't be delivered till November, Jim.
Yeah, but that's, so, so that's a ninety thousand dollar machine, but extended price says a hundred and ninety six thousand. Oh, that's, that's over the payments or whatever?
No, there are two of them.
There's two of them. So now all of a sudden, that's a hundred and ninety, that's two hundred thousand dollars. And if we're gonna use the eight percent interest over, how many months is that one? There's no months on, there's no terms on that one.
That, that'd be the sixty months as well.
Okay, so if, if one ninety thousand dollar machine is costing us eighteen hundred, then two is costing us at least four thousand, that's another forty eight thousand dollars a year, and we're gonna be in negative numbers for the capital. And we didn't budget, because Chris and I, any of this stuff that says two thousand and twenty two and then come in at two thousand and twenty four, like those two items there, it says ordered two thousand and twenty two, that's the stuff that we were told that we could decide later on to cancel it or not cancel it, Chris.
The stuff that we're looking at right now?
Yeah, right, okay, and.
Yes, we were.
We're not given that opportunity.
They wouldn't even commit to a price.
They wouldn't even commit to a price or a, or a delivery time. So, you know, it's kind of, I guess, shame on me, because status was approved. But it was approved with, it was, it was approved with, and Justin, you weren't here, and David, you are not part, you're not part of this side here, this was Mark, and this was with the, who is it?
Chet, I think.
Chet, Mark Chet, and then whoever else on the ordering of the equipment.
Do we, I guess I'd go back, do we need two fairway mowers?
All the equipment that we ordered, we need. Now, can we live by and, you know, piece together what we have and get the job done? Probably. The problem with this equipment is it's a two-year lead time. So we don't have to accept this equipment, and even the rough mower that was delivered two weeks ago, I can move that, I can use that at a different property in our portfolio and unburden the club from the payments. My concern is if one of the rough mowers fails, or it become, become upside down on it, continue to have to put money in to fix it, you know, we'd have to hope to get lucky with a loner, because, you know, again, we'd be two years out, just with the supply chain issues post-COVID, and this, and this golf course in the quicker world is just.
I agree with you, I agree with you on that. What I'm looking, so, you know, if we need a rough mower, we need to be there, then that's where we need to be going.
I think, I think.
Do we need?
Two.
Do we need two fairway mowers? Could we buy one now and, you know, keep the better of the two we have or the equipment they're replacing, and look to cycle it in later versus taking a two hundred thousand dollar hit?
Probably in the short term, yes. We, we could, we could, we could, like I said, get through with some of these pieces. I don't know how long they would last, but we could do that. If one fails, it, it would hurt the operation just to have one, one rough mower, or one, excuse me, one fairway mower.
Right.
But, you know, we could, we could get it done. But from, from a, from a budget standpoint, you know, when, when I budget the golf course, you know, we're looking at two hundred and seventy three thousand in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, EBITDA. And, you know, below the line, when we look at our capital schedule of a hundred and forty thousand, then a net cash budget of a hundred and twenty five thousand profit. So, I mean, that, that's the way we budgeted. So, I mean, the golf course is gonna be able to, to carry that burden and still have a, a net cash if we hit our budget.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm more, I'm more concerned of that in March, we said, come back to us, because we might be able to finance it better through the town. And are we gonna be able to finance a machine now that's two weeks old in the town being used? Okay, or are we stuck at eight percent? And then I just want, Justin, what I really want to see is what it's gonna cost us, and then balance it out for the next five years of some other stuff, payments of capital disappearing, just like the golf carts disappeared, and hopefully they last a little bit longer than what the lease was, okay? And then that something else is gonna move off the capital, right? In the next two years, something else will move, will move out of the payment schedule?
Yeah, what dies off of it?
You know?
Yeah, and if you look at that, so I mean, I forwarded this, this schedule in April, if you look at that schedule, you know, we have some, some heavy burden years from a capital, well, and there's operating leases in there from an equipment standpoint, at peak in, you know, twenty five, twenty six, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty seven, twenty eight. But then, you know, fifty six, fifty seven thousand of that falls off in twenty eight, twenty nine, and it's gonna continue to dissipate in, in twenty nine, thirty, and we're gonna have, you know, four, five, six-year-old equipment and be in a good, a good position. But having said that, like I said, if we're not comfortable accepting this equipment, or, you know, if you want a little bit more insight into, into some of these forecasts, I'm happy to do that, and like I said, I'm happy to, to move this equipment should we wanna, you know, pivot to a different, a different plan. So this is, by no means.
I, I think, Justin, let's stop talking about pivoting it somewhere. We're just asking for an explanation of, so if you scroll always over that bottom, no, the bottom line there, so where it says fifteen thousand three twenty for twenty three, twenty four, do you see that? Justin, are we sharing this?
Yeah.
Yeah, the fifty one, three oh two, Jim?
The, right, twenty three, twenty four, it says fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and one cent. Is that to be the balance in the account after all these lease payments? In the capital?
Thought that's what.
Or is that the total payment? So there's eighty seven thousand dollars up above on what was, what was already, was already out there, correct? Line S.
So I think they're wrong, I think they're wrong, so the, like, the HD utility cart here, pick it up, start payment.
Yeah, but so you see where the loader attachment is, Justin?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the bunker rake and everything, and then there's a total of eighty seven thousand six forty one oh one. That's the total for that, for this year, twenty three, twenty four, for the total payments of all the lease stuff above that. And then there's the other items that were like ordered or delivered, you know, for the twenty twenty four delivery. So there's another fifteen thousand dollars there.
Yeah.
But if that, but if that eighty thousand dollar machine is in there, it's telling me that the payment for the eighty six thousand at eight percent is four thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty five cents, but I thought you just told me it was eighteen hundred dollars a month.
That, that's for the full year payment.
What's for the full year?
What line do you want, Jim?
I'm an S, I believe.
Sorry, but.
It's tough to say.
It, well, it's a long spreadsheet here.
I'm looking for future, future needs, future needs twenty twenty four.
Okay.
Let's go to the ground master forty five hundred.
Got it.
Now let's scroll over to the payments. It says four thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty five cents on line item S in the Excel spreadsheet.
But then, then the next year is twenty four thousand.
So they're just.
But I thought it was eighteen, but I thought it was eighteen hundred dollars a month.
It is, but probably that's assuming it wasn't gonna be, this is all assumptions of when it's gonna be delivered.
So that's all we need to know, Justin, is like, an update, it's, it's, it's June, we got it in, we owe a payment in June and July, August, September, October, November, December.
We're gonna have six payments instead of two, or whatever the forty two.
Right, right.
That's assuming.
So you see what I'm saying there, Justin, there's a forty one hundred dollar payment for twenty three, twenty four?
In twenty three, twenty four, that's because, yeah, that would be on the fiscal, the fiscal expense for May and June, and then the next, but, the next fiscal year would be for twelve-month payment.
Okay.
Next, so the next, so that's what's, so it's assuming we were gonna get two payments in this fiscal year.
So May and June.
May and June.
So now if I go into the twenty twenty four, twenty five, there we are, okay? And I look up above that, for, because this is underneath future needs, but I look above, it's telling me fifty eight thousand two eight, eight twenty nine, forty four. So that's, that's the current, and then the future is one oh, for next year, the extra stuff coming in, is that one oh three, three three one point six one?
That's what we're gonna spend.
Total of the.
That would be, that would be if we, if we ordered the additional three pieces as well. The rough mower trim, the Triplex greens, which those greens mowers, we're not getting because we're just gonna keep, we talked to Michael and Mary Ellen about the Triplex greens mowers, so we can take those off the list, because we're gonna keep what we have and buy those out at the end of that lease term.
Okay, but what I'm getting, what my question is, is that one oh three, is that just for everything in green?
Yes.
Yes.
And the total payment for next year for twenty four, twenty five is gonna be one oh three if we took everything in, plus the fifty eight, so like one sixty one, one sixty two.
Correct.
Okay, and I'm just saying that we're probably only gonna have about a hundred and forty at the end of twenty twenty five, and we have to make those payments. So if you can get something to us in the next couple of days of taking out some of those payments that you just said, and run the same sheet, Justin, with what we know today, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I just think if we can tighten our belt and maybe not have two fairway right away, and maybe kick that down a little bit, because we'll start to, you know, some stuff does start to come off of the, the, the capital plan. But my, my larger one is why we're not looking at financing this differently, because if you go scroll to the left, Michael, the interest rate we're talking about.
Eight percent?
No, twenty twenty seven, we're talking a twelve percent interest rate.
Right, yeah.
And sixteen after that.
So that's what the board, Justin, before you came back onto the golf course area down there, this, that's what the board was asking for with Chet and Mark, okay? We were asking to go to the banks here and see what better interest rate we can, and then that will change your schedule of how much money and, and what is left at the end. So if you could just work that out the next couple of days or whatever with Michael and, and Mary Ellen, and get us something that we could look at that makes sense instead of, like, you just told us some of those things you wouldn't be doing, but I'm looking at a sheet showing me we are.
Sure, no problem, and, and that, those percentages are just forecast multipliers, they're not, um, it's just, it's just an assumption on, you know, those prices are gonna go up here in the next, you know, two, three, four years.
I got that, but.
But sure, no problem.
It, we just look at the, you know, is it possible to get away without two fairway mowers? And that would get us back in line with our budget. We just.
I don't know about that.
Huh?
I don't know about that.
Well, it should, I mean.
Go down further, go down further. I think somewhere in here is irrigation then too, or is that in here? Or is irrigation down further, Justin? Where's the irrigation system?
Irrigation system, it's on this sheet.
Right, but there's another.
No, what I'm saying, but if you look at twenty four, twenty five, we could, by eliminated, cutting down to a fairway mower, kicking that further down the line, we're, would be better cash flow situation for what we're setting aside for capital.
About twenty two thousand dollars, eighteen hundred a month for an eighty thousand dollar machine or whatever. But, but if we got a better interest rate, then maybe it'd be a little bit better.
But we're looking, but that's.
Maybe thirty grand at times.
We're putting a hundred and fourteen thou, uh, is that for the year? No, oh, that's the price.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not looking.
So that's why I was going down to the bottom and saying, how much money are we?
I mean, it's all, what's, what's the goal? Is that how this works? Are they giving a capital expenditure goal to work within?
We were kind of off on that with Mark, we never really had a good cat, Mark would be all over the place with the shell game.
It was, it was also prior to Justin coming back.
It was.
And, and COVID, because we were told, we don't know what the price is.
We were agreeing to things.
You don't know when we're gonna get them.
Justin, you're gonna be here at our next meeting, right, July eighth?
We wouldn't do it this.
Is that, is July eighth the right date? You're coming down to see me in July?
I'm definitely coming in July, I'm gonna try to make the eighth, it's either gonna be the second or third week in July, for sure.
All right, so if, so, you know, there is some hesitancy internally about some of these purchases. It makes me feel a little better now that, that we have a little bit of time, because what you're saying is even though that you do have the ground master forty five hundred, if we run the numbers and it just doesn't work, it's something that you can move to a different location. It's an option, it's an option.
If we don't want the equipment, we will not keep it. And I know that you don't, yeah, we can move it, Michael, if we have to, for sure.
Okay.
Is there a, like, a top, middle, bottom projection for twenty four, twenty five? So, do you have planning for next year laid out already?
That's what I'm trying to get, like, can you give us, Justin, just run with what you have, and then take away the ones at the bottom that you said that we weren't gonna get, that they shouldn't have been on there, okay? And then do for Chris and I, do two and then do one of the other cut, okay? And show it to us, but get along with Michael. And show it to us, but get along with Michael here at the town of what could we get from like Community Bank or whatever for an interest loan on something like this? And then we can plug those interest rate numbers in and have them more up to date. But I'm really concerned about two years out. You know, we got one year that we didn't put 100K in from the town. We may have to.
I think we need to...
We, we need a, we need a document showing us better than, this was done a while ago. So let's like, can it?
And, and Justin, I guess, and for the board as well, I guess it would be hard to, to seek formal approval on some of these assets because you don't know when it's going to show up, right? Did, did they just call you and say it's coming next week or what?
Yeah, it's, that's exactly what they do, Michael. Yes. It's a, it's a 18 to 24-month lead time on most of these pieces. And you don't know you're, you're getting them until two, three weeks, sometimes a week before.
And you don't know the price either, correct?
Don't know the price until the official drop, correct?
Yeah.
But that's what we, that's what we were told two years ago, 18 to 24 months ago. But we were also told, Justin, that we would get a heads up and find out that two weeks ago a machine is there, we didn't get the heads up. And I'm not leaning to sending it back if we really need it, okay? I, I just wanted to make sure that our cash flow is set right and that we make the right adjustments.
Well, we should, we should be definitely financing this somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Justin, I'm getting my feet under me now. I, I'm feeling that way anyway. And, um, you know, although we don't know when it's going to show up, I think we, we may have the opportunity to revisit this every fiscal year at some time and say, you know, before our budget and say, this is what our, this is what's in line for our capital purchase in 2024. Uh, do we think it's still a good move? So we could maybe strategize that.
This particular situation is never going to happen again, not, not when I'm here.
Good.
Thank you.
For sure.
Because if it's 18 to 24 a month, we should be revisiting every six months.
Plenty of planning.
Okay, it's 12 to 18 months, six to 12 months. That's all.
Absolutely.
So do you guys know what you got to do?
Yeah, Justin, I'm on vacation next week, but I'm committed to working an hour every day. I've told too many people that, so I'm scared.
It's up to eight hours.
I'm scared everybody thinks they get one hour.
He's up to 12 hours.
If you send me something, you have my word, it goes straight to Mary, well, CC Mary Ellen for sure. Well, actually, send it to Mary Ellen, address it to her, CC me. And then anything that comes to us, we're coordinated and get it to the board. It'll be ready for, uh, July 8th if you're here.
So I saw Mary Ellen on as Maeve. Mary Ellen, you there on mute? You there, Mary Ellen?
She left.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you could work with Justin this week on what we want, correct? You've been listening?
Yes, I have, but it, remember, it is year-end close for us.
Right.
And, and we're trying to, and we're trying to get a lot of money that's been held up from us for quite a while.
So keep using that 4,500 for the next three or four weeks, Justin, and start putting some numbers together, then run it through Michael and Mary Ellen next week.
Okay, will do.
Is that enough for golf?
Yeah.
It's plenty.
Town finances. Thanks a lot, David.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion first to approve the Green Mountain National Golf Course comparative report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We got the town report, town comparative. You want to give us the clean?
Yeah, I, I don't really have any updates here for you from last year. Uh, this is for May, and then obviously, um, our last, uh, report for fiscal year will be June. That'll really give us a good overview of where we're at, where we landed. Mary Ellen and I had a meeting with the auditors today. Uh, they should be coming. Mary Ellen, did they say August, did we land on August or October that the auditors were coming to assess FY '24? Well, anyway, it's other...
Sorry, it's August.
Okay, August. Oh, that's okay.
August is quick. That's good.
Yeah, so, well, our goal is to have the audit by November. Gives us enough time to bed it, get it in the town report. So no, I, I don't have anything particular I need to speak on regarding the comparative budget report.
So make a motion to approve the comparative budget report for May of 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we got the Treasurers report, May 31st, 2024. This is what I guess LaCreacher and Ken were talking about, whatever. And so there's $3,337,000 and should be in restricted funds. At the end of May, there was $2,017,000. And we know this because of, we're spending more money up on East Mountain Road and we're waiting for the reimbursements. And you are going to work on sometime for the July meeting coming up, the second meeting, to have a better stance of where we ended up at the end of June. And you have choices that you and Mary Ellen are working on now to pull in some band note money to make sure that we have enough to go through.
Yep.
And then the ban was voted for to come in. And then as the money comes in from FEMA and from, well, the ban from FEMA, let's say, and then from McCowsky or SRF, we'll start then paying that ban back off. And then we'll have our money coming back in. And, you know, we're lucky that we have money in the account because how much money are we really spending so far up on Route on East Mountain Road from the July 7th?
I'd have to pull Abby's report back up.
About two, three?
Yeah, I'd say two.
So two, so $2 million, and how much have we gotten back? About six?
Yep.
Okay, so there's 1.4 million. If we had that 1.4, we would be able to cover the restricted fund. And then still, how much money in the SRF stuff that Chet, prior to you, was pulling from the general fund that now we're trying to work back into the general fund?
Yeah, before we had, before we got the ban.
Right, before you got the ban. So I think you would have the $4 million in this account to cover the restricted fund and then also have the money to run for the month of June, okay? And then we should be getting the rest of the money back from FEMA because we had around $800, $900,000 for rainy day funds, okay? And we should get that back once all FEMA is done. So...
Yeah.
But like Mary Ellen said, you guys are doing your year-end. And so if we can do like the end of July meeting, even if it just has to be a special meeting at the end of July to, to just cover how we got through this. And this is the same thing like Irene was. We had to do like $7 million worth of Irene debt. And sooner or later, we had to borrow money for it while we were getting money in.
And there, and there, and just the harsh reality of it is, is that we're not, we're not allowed to pad our budget. So at the end of June, you're, the expectation is that you're close. You're close, you know, so we just, we, you know, we've got FEMA, it hit us. You know, we've got a lot of big projects going on, waiting for loans to be, you know, opened up due to permitting. All that's opened up. Now we're starting the process of bringing money in.
Right. All right, we did not...
Do we accept a Treasurers report?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you see that somebody else showed up in the meeting?
I did. I saw that, uh, the presenter showed up.
Okay, is she still here?
I believe so.
This is not for the...
I don't, I don't know if, uh, oh, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I don't know if Lisa's still here, and we know that, yeah, so Lisa's, and she's gone. She's gone too, so.
Okay, so Lisa might have told us.
Saved us.
Golf gets me every time.
Oh, man, I got my papers all messed, messed up. I think we're through, actually, but... Oh, I got you.
So we're back to open public comments after all that talking. If you still got any questions in your head, okay? Everybody here is good? Online, Patrick, Pia, any questions? Hearing none? Um, other business?
All good.
Pia. Thank you, Pia. All good.
Hey, Pia, that, um, that doll you gave me was amazing, just so let you know. It's probably not the most appropriate thing to say in the meeting. We can probably catch up, but holy cow.
So we're going to, at, at 7:57, again, a motion to go into executive session for labor relation agreements with employees, 1 VSA, 313A, 1V...
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.